So, calling to order the January 8th, 2019 Board of Education meeting. We're going to move into a recognition tonight.
It's great recognition. This one's a bit delayed because the Florida holidays and a hard time bringing, getting the gang together. Can you guys come up to the table, please? Brian, Luke, and TJ, you want to join them?
Yeah.
Grab a chair. Brian, just grab one of those chairs.
Sit here?
Yes, please. So, CTEs get a lot of press nationally. You know, I think it was actually part of our previous president Obama, one of his dresses, and you know, it gets a lot of traction and a lot of press. This goes beyond, you know, I think traditionally it was, there's a CTE student, you know, there's a certain type of student which I think, we've broken that stereotype in our high school, and we got incredible recognition, which Gail's going to introduce, but I have had the opportunity to personally see Luke's class in action, to come to Brian's robotics after school, which was unbelievable. I'll apologize on camera for missing the robotics tournament, which Brian and his team hosted, because I spent my entire weekend at hockey rinks, but it was outstanding. And Dan is the fearless leader of the department, our program coordinator, who's part of the curriculum renewal process right now. But this award, I'm going to let Gail kind of give some background on it, an incredible recognition for some incredible folks.
Yeah, I just want to thank all of you for the role that you've played in looking at the program of studies revising the offerings that we have, and really taking a look at how to make our curriculum even more engaging. Every single person at this table has written and developed courses in those efforts. This is actually a recognition of program excellence, which I think speaks highly to that work. It's designed to recognize superior technology and engineering education programs in Connecticut, affiliated with the Connecticut Technology Engineering Educators Association. And these programs are a standard for comparison and models for development of other programs around the state and around the nation. It's also, the components that are essential for those that are selected for this award looks at contemporary technology and engineering education curriculum and practices, which I think the curriculum committee has seen firsthand in some of their presentations. The faculty has to be appropriately certified and involved in ongoing professional development. The program has to reflect in technology, education philosophy, and curriculum structure, must incorporate contemporary teaching strategies. The curriculum must have been written or revised within the last five years, yay, and the program must actively be promoted by the technology and engineering teachers, and must have the support of building and district administration. So, those are a lot of components, and actually, I think this is the second time that we've gotten this recognition. Last time was three years ago, is that right?
2011.
2011. So, it's incredible that Daniel Hand has been recognized for excellence in programming twice in this organization.
The special title is Connecticut Program of the Year for CTE. Yeah, for the entire state.
I did want to share, they did present us with a banner as well, that we could display on the school. I'll let the two tall individuals hold it up. Just as another appreciation for what we do.
That's wonderful.
So TJ will tell us where to hang it.
But it's an incredible amount of work that goes into that, and a lot of work that goes into the application process itself, and a lot of vetting on their end to decide on our programs.
You know, and it's not lost on me, it's easy for us, and TJ and I talk about this often, to, you know, from the mountaintop shout that one out of every four applications to Ivy and Ivy colleges gets accepted at hand. Seventy percent of every application gets accepted to the tier right below IBs from hand. And a lot of those kids, oh, in the top 10 in the SATs every year, blah, 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 a lot of those kids are in your programs. Okay? So, I think you've cracked that stereotypical model, and you serve all kids, and you do it in a way that is incredible, and you could rest on your laurels, but you're in the curriculum renewal process right now in a year that you've won that. So, I mean, that's, it's quite remarkable, guys, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
There's a million degrees in here.
Billy, can you turn down the heat? I never say that in this room.
Gail did it.
Gail did it? I believe you, yeah.
He always comes up.
Turn it off, Gail, turn it off. I'm usually freezing, he usually keeps us awake. All right. So, moving on to public participation, is there any member of the public that would like to speak?
Jim Madison, 235 Green Hill Road. First would like to say that I really appreciate and thank all of you that serve on this board. I think if there was one board I would not want to be on, it's this board.
Oh, jeez.
It's a lot of work, and we're grateful for all of the work you do. I had served on Board of Finance a number of years ago, and the first year I was on it, our school budget failed. It took us, second time we got it passed, took us three times to get the town budget passed, so that was probably, what, eight years ago or so. I think, I really encourage you to continue with the work that it sounds like was started this morning, and looking at some other areas that don't affect programming, where we can bring this budget that gets presented to the taxpayer, taxpayers, a little bit less. I think the Island Avenue parents were hoping to see a little bit more savings in the budget in giving up their school. I think we might be getting to the point where the reality of the fact that this district enrollment is down over 1,000 students over the last several years, with never a budget that was less than the year before. I recognize the special ed requirements, I recognize the contracts and so forth, but here with a school that's closed, the taxpayers are going to basically see no savings unless, well, the $60,000 maybe, but if, if you can work on some of these other areas to come in a little bit more reasonably, I think we might be getting to a tipping point where, given, we actually have fewer voters that are parents with children in the school system, we could be getting close to where we hit that negative vote the first time around. So, continue with your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other members of the public like to speak? Here none. We will move on to our student representatives. Jackie, Ryan, hi.
Hello. Last time we were here, I talked about the new vaping policy, that was administered at hand, where there were teachers' monitors outside of the bathrooms. And I went back and talked to some of my friends about how it was going and stuff. I think a major concern, from girls mostly, guys seem to not really have a problem with it, and Ryan was even saying that he thought it's cut down dramatically in the bathrooms, what has been going on. But with the girls I've talked to mostly, it's a, they're all very concerned, it feels like an invasion of privacy having someone sitting outside of the bathrooms. And apparently, a lot of people go into the bathrooms if they're really stressed out and need a break, or they like call their parents or something else, and they feel like having someone sitting outside the bathroom is preventing them from having like, okay, it's kind of weird that the bathroom's like the only safe private space that students have to go to, but I know a lot of kids are like going there if they're really stressed before a test, or if they have to present or something, and they might just like take a minute to themselves, or if they're crying or something else, they don't want anyone else to hear, and just having someone outside the bathroom is kind of like interrupting them from doing that, having their space.
Where, Jackie, can you help me understand, are they in the bathroom? The monitors?
People just, oh, no.
The monitors?
No, 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 no.
No, sorry.
Are those the bathrooms with no doors? Are you talking about the ones that don't, that you kind of go around with?
Yes, the walls are, so you can't see in, but they're.
Okay, I understand, that's a good point.
Yeah. So, the monitors are outside of like the entrance to bathrooms, like kind of like across the hall, like facing the entrances to the bathrooms?
Question, both of you meet with Mr. Salieter and the leadership, student leadership group, has that come up, have you circled back to it yet at that level?
We haven't circled back yet. But we have a student leadership meeting on Friday.
You'll bring that up, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of saw the opposite, just for me as like a guy. I don't want to, like, it might be different for girls, but for guys, like, it seems that like a bunch of kids that like do bad things, like, it's like 30 kids in a bathroom at once, I've seen that, and it's literally not happened since this policy's been through.
That's true. Well, it's like congregating.
Yeah.
But I know there's, if, there's some kids where if you're at the point where you're using those things in school, a monitor outside the bathroom isn't necessarily going to stop them, it might stop 30 kids from going in all at once and doing it, but I think that the kids who want to do it bad enough that they're already doing it in school, it's not necessarily stopping them from doing it in school.
Has it led to even a reduction or a slowdown?
I've seen less, like, I haven't seen any of it, like, outside of the stalls or anything.
Don't, I don't know, but.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, Gail.
Yeah, on top of that, trimester two's in full swing, a bunch of seniors that are taking certain UConn classes, we just have midterms for UConn because lines up with the UConn midterms. So, that was kind of stressful, but that's about it right now.
Great.
And has there been any feedback from the message that went out today about Decker, the dog sniffer from the police department, starting to introduce himself to the high school environment?
Yeah, so I know a couple of my friends just kind of like mentioned it, they saw the email, thought it was interesting, I guess, but no, no one's really been like, oh my God, that's insane.
Yeah. That's good. We like to classify it as insane.
I don't think it's a bad thing.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad thing, no.
It's not like, I don't know, we're forcing kids to like unpack, like go through like the TSA or something.
No. Shoes aren't coming off.
I don't love dogs.
So, just for the purposes, since we're on camera, if I may expand on that, so part of a multi kind of problem strategy is acknowledgement that there is access to technology for electronic cigarettes, and with the company of this vaping, it's a pervasive problem with really every high school in the country right now, is one of the biggest challenges we're facing. So, Mr. Salieter put together some, some ideas that he proposed at this level, at the board level, but also with me, around multiple strategies, one being more adult presence really, and I hate to be a little, call it the scarecrow effect, but really, having an adult there does tend to change behavior, if you put an adult in the hallway, kids may behave a little bit differently. But also, we know the drug testing kit that we talked about at this level that the Madison Police Department supported. Introducing Decker into the health classes is really where we want to start, just a couple of health classes to show, you know, his ability, which is quite remarkable. It's one word command, and give him a few seconds and he can find anything within his range. And then getting him used to the population, it's more up to turn, I think, than anything else, so it's not going to be perfect, but we certainly think we're well on our way.
Any other questions? Thank you both. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I just advocated my time here for any follow-up discussion on the earlier workshop, knowing we only had an hour. I have nothing to present, and we have one request for information that, I just want, that's the only thing I want to do is make sure. The only official request for information since we had the ECA numbers was the savings, to clarify the breakdown of savings with the administrators, the chairman and secretary. But besides that, I didn't have any other information that I wrote down, Stacy, I don't know if you did, no.
That's all I did.
Specifically get, we can get that. I'll turn it over to the board, or otherwise you can go.
I just wanted to say, I found that to be productive and helpful, since it was not a finance committee meeting this morning, to get a sense of what was discussed. I appreciate the budget that you all put forward, and I think the book and the explanations last week and tonight were exceptionally helpful, and I really truly appreciate that. I think the additional staff that we're talking about, adding literacy coach and the guidance are important, and the expertise of you all making these recommendations, I will follow that foundation. And I think there was some talk about the per pupil costs going up. I saw that, and it didn't really surprise me that we pay more per pupil because we have an exceptional school system, and we did what you pay for, and as a parent with two children in the school system, I was glad to see that we invest in our kids, and that's why we all came to this town. And while numbers might be going down, like you said about mental health needs, social, emotional growth and development, and literacy coaches, it can still, even if our numbers go down, there's still cost that increase, so I thought that all made perfect sense. And I really appreciate all the work and the discussion, thinking about how if there's other ways to save costs, then I just think that's a good exercise, but I appreciate the budget coming in where, where it was, and I do see that as savings. Otherwise, we have an increase in the budget, and this year we don't have an increase, so I see that as savings. So, that was my comments, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I think I'll put forward now, I was going to wait till the finance committee, not to belabor anything that we talked about. I was, I'm on the finance committee, I was at the meeting this morning, and I found it very helpful. I guess my observation, one point, one observation, the point is, there was a vote taken this morning at the finance committee that ultimately resulted in a request directed back to Tom and his team to go through this exercise that we talked about, back a number of 190,000 to see where those cuts were made. I voted against that, and I appreciate that, to the point of a workshop is to go through and vet these things substantively, and I certainly appreciate that. My vote against asking the district to come back from 190,000 was not to cut short discussion on any of these things, particularly as they relate or may not relate to the strategic plan, or the programming, or to the health of the educational process. My concern, I guess, was, my vote no was essentially a check on our process. My, my, my feeling was that the district up to that point had met its requirements that we set out, we set the rules, they followed them, and we also have a strategic plan we've endorsed, and we expect a budget to come in that is aligned with that. If there, if there is a disagreement, fundamental disagreement about what savings constitutes, I think as a board, we've got to figure that out in advance. And I just felt like we were entering into a different area by, you know, formally requiring the district to come back with an articulation savings. I'm not sure under what standards we would then view these savings, what's the definition of programs? Is it, in some respects, if you're going to start a budgeting process, and you are expected to come back with a numerical cut of X, I get that, and that may have to cut into programs in years that are going to be more difficult. I've experienced that as an educator, and we may experience that as a district. I just wanted to be cautious about setting a precedent this morning, so just to explain on the record my vote this morning, but also, I guess, an admonition to the board itself, is to pay attention when we do have some fundamental disagreements about what we expect as a board and what our constituents expect, that seems to be happening here, and I just wanted to see what could we do maybe better going forward.
Good points. Thank you.
Good.
I just wanted to point out, most of us on this board as presently constituted were on the board, actually, no, that's not the case, some of us on this board were, were on the board when we took the tough decision to close Island Avenue School. And I want to just kind of rewind a little bit and reset. We did loosely discuss during those discussions, the fact that closing a school would be approximately a million dollars a year, and we were admonished by Tom, very specifically, and others, that it's not really fully a million, it's approaching, it's between 700 and a million, and when it all washed out, it ended up being around 800 and something thousand. So.
Just for, in staffing, and then the operational cost brought it to 972.
972.
972.
Okay, 972, so it was pretty darn close.
Yeah.
But it wasn't quite a million. And I, I just, I kind of feel like, notwithstanding some of the discussion that's been held since then, and particularly with, you know, in regards to this budget season, the fact is, we have done our flat level best as a district, and I assume as a board, we will end up gratifying this, something close to it with a vote in a couple of weeks, but, you know, we're endeavoring to keep faith with the community, and to really show that savings, almost dollar for dollar. And I, you know, it's difficult for me to understand when you're talking about operating budget to operating budget, and we're talking about reducing almost a million dollars this year, and every year thereafter, by operating with one fewer school buildings. You know, it's difficult for me to buy the arguments that the Board of Ed is not delivering, or would not be delivering if we vote in favor of a budget similar to what's being proposed by the, by the district, that we're not keeping faith with, with our promise from last year. So, I just, I wanted to bring that history forward. Yes, there are other expenses, there are always, you know, other things we are looking to, you know, keep up with, or spend money on, or catch up on frankly, when it comes to facilities, for example, for years of neglect with the facilities. And I just, I wanted to be very clear that when the budget itself removes an offsetting amount that's equal to what we promised last year to remove, and that has a continuing effect year after year, I think it's, I think it's a good thing that we, you know, we should be proud of doing. And it's, you know, it's strong from a fiduciary perspective, we're keeping faith with the town, we're all taxpayers too, and I just, I wanted to claim that, because I think it's important for us to keep that in mind and keep that perspective.
Any other? All right, great, happy, Ryan, Jackie, no? Moving quick of another, sorry. So sorry.
Just a couple of quickies. Yeah, it's okay. Just a couple of quick ones. Kirk and I had the opportunity to meet with another real estate office, Cola, Cola Bank?
Yep, Cola Bank.
Outstanding feedback, and Kirk, you could help fill in the pieces here. Gail, while we're doing this, can you boot up? And we had, no, you don't have to go to it, I want to just show something on the website quickly.
I am too.
But one, the two good things that stuck out after the workshop tonight, Kirk, and you may, looked at the spot, and you may have noticed this as well, class sizes and the presence of a second adult that we have, teachers aid in the elementary classrooms, was two of the biggest selling points that the realtors had said when they are kind of ushering parents around town.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was one of their big selling points, so.
And, and they also emphasize, man, just to elaborate briefly, they also emphasize the importance of the, of the educational program, not totally to the expense of the facilities, but that that was much more important.
Yeah.
Than, than the facilities themselves. And then the only other thing that the person who was making those points brought up, and this is the reason in part, for some of the conflicts, I heard this before, for some of the conversations we've been having around the budget, was that there is a concern about the level of property taxes, that the level of property taxes in Madison has currently reached, and can we do something to help hold those totals down?
Yeah.
But, but the first two points that Lauren brought up were class size and what kind of support professionals do the teachers have in the classroom?
And I only raise that because they're directly, the perception of the district from a realtor's perspective, which was the consensus in the room, those are directly related to staffing, which is 80% of our budget. So, there is a through line there, you know, and I, it was a great experience, and we've been through two offices, and we may do more. It's all in the spirit of the tri board, you know, working group on school facilities, and they downplayed the facility part to the extent that programmatic relationships with teachers, small class sizes, that matters more than anything, so. So, I'd give you that little tidbit. We, in addition, one real quick thing that we had talked about as we expanded the website, which I'll show in a second, I like to put a tab on the website, and my goal was by springtime of, and I work with Dave Anderson on the town side on this, just simply, why should I move my family to Madison? And to work with the town to kind of create a tab of school and town features that when you're out there surfing, and realtors had said, if that's something that we can point prospective buyers to, that may, and to use Jim's expression, may be the tipping point when it comes to, you know, buyers and so forth, so. We are in the ecosystem of Connecticut, which is shedding people and millennials at a, at a concerning rate, but more to come on that. Strategic plan, Tom, you mentioned strategic plan, this was in a very dusty kind of corner of the website that was hard to find unless you had a breadcrumb trail. It now will have its own button, its own features. If I could just drive for a second, I just wanted to show the board, and we'll add as we go along. But very, very simply, we have the strategic plan, what the process was for the board, you could read the text at your own leisure, the actual, what a strategic plan is, and then the evolution of ours from 2012, really, to the present day. And what we are proud of is that we have direct links, when you talk about district vision, you can easily click it here, and then you can get to what was the driver, and this was through Free Education Summits in 2012 with about 50-plus community members, we have the roster and biographies of each of those folks, which I want to reconvene in the near future. The belief statements, which we have crafted in the form of a theory of action, which are the if and then statements here. But the strategy map, which is really neat, because it gets into each of the strategic objectives, but what we love from a real, you know, kind of ease of use, you just go on one of them, and what is that? Well, that's what it is. So, you can click on the definition of any strategic objective, and bam, that's what it is. So, for community members, they can see that. And then finally, it's all in one document, you know, which we'll, we'll have as well, but it's easier on the map, and then finally, the scorecard, you know, which gets into the objectives, what measures we have in place in the initiatives. So, that's really the, the substance of what we intend to keep up on the website, and to update as we go forward, obviously, so we just wanted to share that. As you brought up strategic plan, I thought it was important that, you know, we keep things tethered to that. When the question comes up of, you know, cut or fund, well, it depends, you know, I think you pointed out a number of times, it depends on what our primary mission is.
And shout out to Rita, who somehow makes it look easy.
Say what?
A shout out to Rita, who somehow getting online makes it look really easy.
Remarkable, and she produces absolutely.
Is that it? We can come back?
That is it, thank you.
And the realtors were also very excited about having access.
Yeah.
To a tab like this, because they represent properties, they're, they are supposed to be agnostic with respect to Guilford versus Clinton versus Madison, because in reality, as their day job is to sell property, so they can't, can't, won't recommend one community over another, but if there's a tab that, that, to which they can refer people, that describes the quality of the education here, why, that's something that they would find very, very interesting. And I also asked Joanne if she was getting your emails, and she is, and when she's getting them, she's passing them out to the brokers in the office.
Excellent. And I think it also is helpful for board members, as we talk to community members too, to, to have this as a tool to refer to, or refer community to. Great.
It's also helpful for other educational administrators who might want to borrow good practice.
Uh-oh. Is that what they call it, borrowing?
Borrowing.
If we're having any more budget discussion, I'm going to dismiss the central office meeting, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to be sure, nobody has any other questions?
Thanks, guys.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Take it along.
Along.
Good night. Should I say, stay with Bobby?
You guys have a lot of homework? You sticking around? You're good.
I'm all good.
You're good.
Awesome.
Jackie, you're good?
Sure.
All right. Lower, Bill, lower.
Yes, please, thank you.
I don't sit long with them.
You know it's warm if I'm warm. Any other?
Not good.
Board member comments? And we want to committee reports, curriculum and student development.
No meeting, nothing to report.
Communications Committee?
We, our next meeting is February 5th, we did not meet this month. I did just want to follow up on what Kirk said, we did publish our third column newsletter, whatever you call it, on our, on the website about the budget process, and we also
have more community members engaged in the process. I think it's important.
Yep, and it's on the social media, district social media, town social media, Rita's all over that. So the patch picked it up and other folks, so it's just in a way for us to communicate and I'm glad that, so I'm reading it, so.
Wonderful.
End of report.
Thank you. Facilities committee?
We did not have a meeting in the interim, so there's nothing to report, but I do want to remind folks that next Tuesday evening, the fifteenth, there's another tri board working group public forum at seven thirty PM at Poulsen Auditorium. And I'm guessing we might need all those seats at Poulsen Auditorium based on the last turnout we had, so be sure to be there.
Can I ask a question about that? Are we, are you going to have a similar sort of setup with activities and the stickies?
Tomorrow morning is going to be how to determine what that meeting will be in the process. We have a committee meeting everyone's and tomorrow we'll be planning for next season.
And, and we will not have stickies in LA unless Wendy again agrees to be responsible for going through all of them and writing them up.
That was great.
I'll pay for that, yeah.
Is that being sent out to the board as a calendar item?
Oh, that's a good question.
I know we emailed.
It is posted.
There's an email, but I don't know.
There was an email, I don't know if there was a.
It'll be useful for those special meetings to be on the calendar, just so we build this track.
Great meetings to attend. It is such an engaging board led by Kirk.
Are you talking with the tri board?
The tri board. Yeah, oh, are you talking about the community forum?
He's talking about the Poulsen.
Really, really all those things, sort of that.
Was that from Wendy? Was that from Wendy? I'll have her.
Okay.
Seven forty-five every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday. And you, you get your money's worth. They're great, really, really great meetings. Okay.
I do like a big morning meeting.
I do too.
You bank schools, girl?
Two banks, girls. But it's only coming if there's schools.
But, you know, we're welcome to anything that you.
Yeah, when I buy.
Bring you a stack of site reports, how's that?
Moving on.
Personnel committee.
Finance.
Oh, so sorry, so sorry. I already checked it, but that's because we were talking. Finance committee.
I can't believe there's anything.
That we haven't already discussed?
We haven't already discussed, but I would like to make two quick points. First, with respect to that comment that Happy has made, as part of the overall budget process, and I apologize for, you know, coming, having come on late into this, into this process. This was, the finance committee meeting this morning was really the first time that we had an opportunity to meet and to discuss the numbers since the first budget workshop. And so that was, that was, you know, our first shot as a committee at the numbers. So, you know, I, I don't know that we're, we're late in the process. I think we're sort of on time in the process because this was our first opportunity to review them as, as a committee.
Can I make a comment? I feel like we actually need to add another committee meeting in as a finance committee, and I know I shudder to say that to all of you because I know everybody's got so many committee meetings, but our next finance committee meeting is the night of the vote. That doesn't, so Tom would want to.
Basically had to present to us and then we don't have really any time to, to talk to any, everybody and.
I was thinking that when you made, when you made a comment.
Could you just move that committee meeting to earlier? Like not in the day, but earlier, like in the week or?
Or even the week, change it to the week before. I think that, I mean, it gives you enough time, but it gives us then to talk to everybody.
Well, Tom, you, you expect it to be finished by this, this Friday?
For the remainder of the hundred.
Yeah.
Me in the morning.
Would you like, why do you poll the four committee members about availability?
We could, we could do that online, like by email, but we also could do a morning.
Well, we have Wendy pull you guys.
Okay. Yeah, so I would just, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, I think that makes good sense.
Okay.
And the other.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm so sorry.
Well, we've delayed long enough now that a senior moment has occurred.
Oh, sure. It'll come back to you.
Let's move on.
Because I'm going to hijack your finance committee report briefly so Galen and I can do, since it falls under finance, a quick CIP update. Can we do that for a little bit? It kind of falls under, it should have been under board number comments probably, but Galen and I have been ensconced in, in the CIP process, as you are all aware, with the items that we sent to CIP, which included, Galen, help me.
Opal.
Security.
Opal.
Opal.
Shed in hand.
The storage at the high school.
Gym floors.
And the gym floor.
And brown pavement.
And the brown pavement. So five items. Again, they were items that were discussed at length and after much discussion, we landed at phasing and the Opel project over two years. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's right. Yeah, because you can't remember it. And then we included the, CIP voted to recommend phasing the Opel over two years and then for nineteen twenty to include the shedded in your hand for the, for the year group. And then twenty twenty-one to redo the gym floors and twenty-one twenty-two to do the pavement, the brown repaving, parking lot.
The high school gym floors? Correct.
Correct. So that was the.
Yeah, Poulsen was done recently, recently meaning the past five years.
Useful to point out, because I said to some of us, what the phasing is, that the first phase is.
So year one, which is nineteen twenty, so not, it won't be.
Actually year two.
It's actually year two, really. We phased this year for the site work, which will happen this summer. So next year, when the students arrive, there will be clearing, but no playground. The following summer, when the kids are out of school, they have agreed to push forward, I like, is that wording? The playground itself, the actual place, structure, as well as the ADA compliant paving, the curbing, the drainage, the port and place surface. And so that's the first or second year that students will be there in that configuration. And then the following year would be the outdoor classroom and the amphitheater. And benches, I think.
The balance of it.
The balance of everything. So we just wanted to give you guys that update. There's still a process that it has to go through. The CIP tonight voted to move it to next week? No, I don't think it's selectmen. We have a meeting, right?
I think we have one more meeting. I think, I believe we both recommended this.
Yes.
Yes, right.
And the next phase is selectmen and then board.
And then the tower.
And then, right, of course, and then the tower.
Two, two things on that. One, I wanted to thank you guys for being our representatives and I think that's a very fair result. And thanks for, for working that out. But I also wanted to point out that the five things that we just talked about was our cut back second stab at a CIP request because the initial request was just for the first five years' worth of the ten-year plan, the first three years of the ten-year plan. And it was much more costly and, and also, to be fair, much more representative of trying to catch up for the neglect that our facilities have faced for years. But we recognize that there may be some facilities moves and there's a study going on now. So we, we did already trim back substantially our initial CIP request. And I do think that phasing, the way you guys came up with, is a very fair, insensible thing to do.
Thank you, I'm per se not. One of the things that we brought up during it as, as your representatives was, we did vote on this package and so phasing it, but, but it worked out, so thank you for that.
Can I answer, as a member of facilities, that the five things that we moved forward, I just want to make, make it clear about that process because the vast majority that have a committee, and we've reported on it here, but it might be lost in the shuffle. So we had the hundred million dollar, ten-plus year plan. From that plan, what we did, over a series of many events with Tom and Bill and others, was to think about what are the things that really need to happen right now? What are the things that have been delayed for some time? And Bill came back, I think, with a list of probably a dozen or so, thirteen things. We continued to hammer on that to say, you know, what else can you cut out of this? What can you delay even one year further? And that, that was a process. And we got to the point where we had the five things and we felt comfortable with that. All right, at least these five things happened, including the phasing possibility for the playground, which I'm not addressing here. You know, really about the other four things, or really the two that are being pushed out, which is the paving and the.
Gym floor.
Gym floor, thank you. That those two things were identified as so critical in year one that we hoped that they would be in year one. So just for, for the record, I want to emphasize that pushing those out to a future year to me, and I think we'll address this in the facilities committee when we reconvene, I would imagine, moves that back into the big pot of all the stuff, the hundred million dollars worth of stuff that needs to happen or another decision that needs to happen. So there were a couple of things that I think are pretty deep cuts for us in terms of trying to say, what are the critical five things? So that was a process and we didn't, we didn't get all those things, so want everyone to be aware of that process. Thank you for detailing that.
Thank you.
So can, can we just confirm, so for the playground at Brown, next year, they have a cleared area. There will be some gaga pits, right? We're doing that?
Yeah, we've talked about the, Bill's not here, but.
Okay. And some swings and some things?
One or two, and some swings, we definitely intend to. And this is a huge asphalt area and there's fields up top.
Okay, so they can play basketball and soccer.
And, and very talented teachers that can help facilitate.
Dig the dirt, the mud, maybe. Yeah, for a year, we'll make the most of it. But that's fine, they've got the pits and there's some structures and areas. Yes, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. I agree. Not easy.
Thank you for letting me hijack finance, Kirk. Personnel committee?
Personnel committee has not met. One, housekeeping, the district did receive a request a couple days back from the regional director for the United Public Service Employees Union, asking in normal course to begin negotiations for the union, for the support staff, the administrative support staff here in the district. Heather will be sending, Thompson will be sending all the members of the committee a calendar request tomorrow. Looking at April, so we can have those discussions.
Thank you.
For the record, our new representative, Upso, has been outstanding, incredibly professional, very convivial, entering the district.
He's new?
Yeah, because Upso's new. So they're representing the main employees. It's been a great partner. Never relate that to.
Policy committee?
So there are two items up for first reading. We actually went into great detail about the last meeting because I thought they were in your packet, they were not in your packet, so you've already heard all of this, so I won't belabor it unless anybody has any specific questions about either.
I have a question.
Fifty-one, ten-four.
On the, the one, the suspension explosion, the first policy.
Yep.
Is, when it says the suspension is consecutive days, so lines two fifty to two fifty-five, are they consecutive school days or are they consecutive calendar days?
School, is my understanding.
So if it's over a break, then they pick back up when, where they left off.
Yes.
Does that need to be specified in the policy? Let me show you.
Yeah, it's different on this one.
No.
Yeah, because of that line.
And if I don't have an answer, it's a first reading.
Oh, it says, hold on, okay.
It's consecutive school days.
It's on two fifty-four, it's two fifty-five, consecutive days.
Yeah, it's like, if you're looking at the electronic version, it's like two thirty-two. If you're looking at this version, it's.
One, two fifty-four.
Two fifty-four.
Just to make it fun.
In the parenthetical, where it says not to exceed five consecutive days, maybe repeat the word school.
School.
Like you do at the beginning of the paragraph.
Oh, as a second to fifty-one.
That's a good one.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else on those two?
Do something with that or?
If you want to, because it came from.
I'll let her do it, just make the check.
Afterward. If there's nothing else about that, we have not met, so there's nothing to do to report. So end of report.
And it's only first reading, so.
These are first readings, we'll have some meetings.
Learn liaison.
I think the meeting is Thursday.
Thursday. Oh, yeah, that's right, we're in between, sorry, you get yours. Tribe board working group for board of education facilities.
With respect to the tri board, as Tom mentioned earlier, he and I met with, with Kohler Banker this morning, they're actually, actually at noon. It was a good group. It was a very interactive meeting, a lot of questions, a lot of interest, and the meeting actually ran significantly longer than, than we expected. They took like an hour out of their day, which is, which is, which is pretty, which I thought was, was pretty interesting and was illustrative of the amount of interest that they had in this, in this topic.
Three, three or four parents of current or former students?
At least four.
Yeah.
And, and the, and the manager, Joanne Sterling, who has been a resident of Madison, I think Joanne said for the life, the last twenty-eight years, has four children who have gone through the Madison school system. So there were, you know, there was a, there was a lot of interest. We are having our second meeting with the public on the fifteenth to gather additional insights with respect to public's views on the existing facilities and, and the criteria that they think are important in any proposal that would come forward, like the length of transportation, getting to any additional reconfiguration in the school, security, and the impact on the mill rate and taxes was a, was a hot topic the last time. So we'll be doing that on the fifteenth. We are.
At Poulsen, correct?
At Poulsen, yep, yep. We are, was that tested?
No, I just wanted to plug it.
Yeah. We are proceeding along parallel lines in the sense of assessing options. While we want as much input from the public as we can get, we are also reviewing some of, some of the options that have been presented in the past. Everything will be assessed based on its logical consistency, its ability to satisfy the various criteria and the implications for the mill rate and, and future taxes.
Wait. Seven fifty, seven forty-five every Wednesday?
Absolutely.
It's a good one.
Seven fifty for me again.
Yeah, right. Audience response?
Well, okay. Not a good thing.
Actually, you and mine.
No, not a bad.
Just to circle back on the CIP update, you mentioned security. Was that being phased in? There was nothing to, you mentioned it, but it wasn't like, we went to the Opel project like right away. So can you clarify, just because that is such a hot topic and everybody has an opinion on that, as you know.
Everybody on the CIP had an opinion as well.
Is that being phased in as well? Is there, is it still open ended?
I'll say something and then I'll let Tom take over. We invest in security every year and for security reasons, you can't disclose exactly what it is, but there's money allocated every single year.
And the CIP, we did put a placeholder in there.
And so security is funded for the next three years for sure, then it's to be assessed thereafter.
So it's like the status quo will remain, it's funded for budget?
Yeah.
That's correct.
So as we put a placeholder of seventy-five thousand dollars, that was what our consultants said is a reasonable number because with CIP, it can aggregate over a couple of years. So there may be a project that we may want to just, you know, wait for and then have the funding for that.
Okay.
Couple of the things to, just to accentuate what Galen had pointed out, that the topics and the details are done in executive session for obvious reasons.
For obvious reasons.
I'm saying that for the camera, not for you. Because I know you know that, yeah. And the, a number of things that we do for security don't really involve resources. And a good example is a few weeks ago. Is that being phased in as well? Is there, is it still open-ended?
I'll, I'll say something and then I'll let Tom take over. We, the, we invest in security every year. And for security reasons, we cannot disclose exactly what it is, but there's money allocated every single year.
And the CIP, we did put a placeholder in there.
And so security is funded for the next three years for sure, then it's to be assessed thereafter.
So it's like the status quo will remain, it's funded for budget, it's.
Yeah, that's correct. So as we put a placeholder of seventy-five thousand dollars, that was what our consultant says is a reasonable number, because with CIP, it can aggregate over a couple of years. So there may be a project that we may want to just, you know, wait for and then have the funding for that.
Okay.
A couple of the things to, just to accentuate what Galen had pointed out, that the topics and the details are done in executive session for obvious reasons.
For obvious reasons.
I'm saying that for the camera, not for you, because I know you know that, yeah. And the, a number of things that we do for security don't really involve resources. And a good example is a few weeks ago when we had regional folks, as well as our emergency services providers here, do a three-hour tabletop exercise, where we go through, you know, our systems, our processes, with some incredibly critical friends to kind of take us through our paces, our follow-up is coming. So it is a, you know, a very multi-pronged approach, but for your purposes, the funding piece is there for your question, and it's staying there as far as CIP is concerned.
Well, no.
Yeah.
It is, it has gotten moved after two years to TBD, and the reasoning behind that from the CIP was that because we're looking at the school facilities and potentially consolidating or moving things, we, there might be less of a need or more of a need for security purposes. So the, the bar is still there.
Okay.
But then dollar figure, I thought it was just one year, but maybe it's more than that, is going to be determined. So it is still acknowledged that security needs to be in there.
And that's tricky for facilities security, like.
Yes.
Yes.
Facilities itself, not the additional resource officer or anything like that.
Capital.
Hardening, hardening an area of the building.
Windows, doors.
Yeah. Capital agreements, yeah.
So on the board.
Good question.
It's maybe also worth, just to get the detail of, that is how it has changed on sort of the CIP spreadsheet and what they're going to push forward from CIP. But on our ten-year plan, that seventy-five thousand dollars remains there for all of the years. So in the, the bigger picture, you know, and the TBD, it's all TBD, it still remains there as a priority for, for this board.
Hundred percent.
So we just don't know.
What we don't know.
What we don't know, but how many years you know.
And also, with regards to next Tuesday's meeting, the forum meeting.
Yeah.
I, we, you know, of course, want to drive as many people as possible. I think we were pretty successful last time at that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It would be great to know, I don't even know, maybe one of you could just let us know, is it the same type of meeting? Is it a part two? Because I, I feel like you would get, there would, a different mix of people.
So two, two things on that. Number one, we did kind of want the element of surprise, the first one, because there were folks that, if you heard, were going to be an active participant, might kind of shown up. So that surprise is gone now.
Right.
The facilities committee.
There were people that were disappointed too.
Yeah.
They had to work there.
They had to work, yeah. The tri board working group meeting tomorrow will plan the agenda, and then we have a reminder, e-notified going out. It'll be in the e-notified.
Okay.
What the format will be.
Perfect. Okay, and I have one more question, I'm so sorry. And I never, I never speak.
You're in.
I am taking it all the time. All I want, just to clarify with the Opel project, just because this is on a lot of people's minds. If for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we can expect some gaga pits, the blacktop area and some swings
Yeah.
to be available to the kids.
Yeah.
In the summer of twenty twenty is when you'll really see the project take shape for.
If it goes.
For the twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Year.
The expectation.
That's, that's the timeline.
It would go through all the boards and town vote, and that will be the schedule. We wouldn't be doing anything with those dollars until the following, a year from this summer.
Okay.
But we also, for next year, we have some very talented teachers that will help facilitate for kids as well where needed. But as far as the structures are considered, yes, the following year.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would throw out there too, there's one thing missing from that list for next year that will be done this summer or is already being done. In addition to the, the swings, gaga pits, blacktop and the existing fields, the clearing is happening or will have happened. So a lot of area being cleared just for, just for general play.
Earthwork.
So.
Line of sight.
What's now just brushing, or was brushed, is.
Yeah, September will be cleared up.
Open play area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Um, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Certainly.
Second. Um.
I have a question.
Um, yep, discussion, thank you.
Um, on the line item transfers, I think this is going to sound like a really dumb question, but the first one is transfer funds to unpaid leave. Do we pay unpaid leave?
I am not going to, I'm not going to answer that without Heather here.
Okay, doesn't that sound like unpaid means it's not getting paid?
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
It does sound that way, but I, that was more than that story.
Maybe these two are related, but if we could get some kind of a.
Yeah, I.
Answer on that, that would be appreciated.
So how is that?
You either vote on it or you hold it until next.
Yes.
I mean, I can get the. Happy, you know, which.
For eleven tary.
It's on page, oh, this is a number. It's, I think the, it's after the list of bills by object. Uh, page thirty-seven. So it's not numbered, but if that would be good.
Got it. Oh, yeah.
I think it has to be held, yeah, and I think it's good.
I, I know in this case, here's a maternity leave, because the names are, so I'm well aware of that, and it's, I would imagine, has to do with substitute coverage, but I won't go say the.
Well, maybe, I'm just wondering if the two in the from were just, were transposed.
Could have been.
Oh.
It seems like that.
So from unpaid leave. But again, why would there be funds in unpaid leave? Because it's unpaid.
I think, I think it means, when I read it the first time, that there is leave that is unfunded.
If we could just load this, so we can get an answer.
Okay, that would be great.
But they, that's what I first.
Yeah. On the consent agenda until our next meeting?
So I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Withdraw. Are you filing? Thank you, Laura. Um. Nobody asked to withdraw a second.
Just so we're clear too, you know, and Kirk pointed this out when he first came onto the board, he was questioning the process of presenting bills and approving them. We pay, we have to pay them. So I understand the exercise here is important to the board's purposes. Really, not many districts go through this practice, but I just want to, I don't want to misunderstand. We have to pay these bills. So just so we know that.
So let, just, this is probably clean to do this. Let me, let me, let me make a motion first to remove item eight point two line transfers from the consent agenda. So that's a motion. It would be in a second.
Second.
No, move, or you made it.
I made it, your second. And then discussion, and we could vote on that, and then we could vote on the rest of the consent agenda.
You're removing line what?
Uh, item eight point two line transfers, thirty-two thousand, one twenty-six.
Gotcha.
So that'll go to the next meeting then?
Yes, just that one thing. I'm, I'm asking for, right now, we haven't voted on that yet, but this is just removing it from the consent agenda, so it can be discussed separately.
I understand. Greg, motion and happy second.
Second. Want to vote on this question?
Um, discussion?
Good idea.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I feel better, thank you.
Thank you, we can't refuse. Opposed, abstained. Okay, motion carries.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Captain.
Second?
Mine is eight point two.
Second, second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
And really, you can raise, given what's left. Item eight point two, anytime you have to raise eight point two now, since it's been pulled from the consent agenda, I'd like to make a motion that we table item eight point two to the following meeting.
Second.
A discussion? Sorry, I'm writing at the same time. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. I didn't write down who. Motion and second, and Laura, you got that?
Great.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the December eighteen, twenty eighteen Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Me, happy.
Happy, abstained. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the removal of used books and equipment.
Second.
And I have a list of those, if anybody would like to see them.
If you want to discuss.
Um.
They already had that discussion.
So happy, I'm sorry, I missed the second. That was happy.
Happy was happy.
Then, great. Um. All in.
Sierra.
Sierra, Sierra.
Some, somewhat.
They're being donated to our.
Sierra.
Half Italian in there.
Sierra Leone with our beloved librarian from the high school. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Is there any old business? Any new, future agenda items? Um, meetings and dates of importance are attached. I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss district security.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you all for attending.